Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
Bucknam, excused. Steve Timms.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Tracy Gildner, absent. Monica Duran.
Here.
Would you please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Order of the Agenda. I move for the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
Second.
Vote please.
Motion carries with Bucknam, oh, Timms.
Well, you need to vote over there.
Motion carries 6-0. You are not.
I move for approval of the minutes of the March 15, 2012 meeting.
Motion carries 6-0.
The next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a couple folks who have signed up. They're both registering to Pew Street addresses, so I assume they're wanting to talk on the public hearing.
Just for point of clarification, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on the, not on the subdivision case tonight?
It's related because of what the traffic is on the, you know, the, you know.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do it as part of the actual case. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, great. Our case tonight, then, our public hearing case MS-12-01, an application filed by William J. Starker for a four lot consolidation plat for property zone Commercial 1 and located at 5560 West 29th Avenue. And staff is here with a presentation.
Now, hopefully, Matt will dim the lights so the folks in the audience can see this. He's usually pretty good about that. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development. Not on? Better? Better, better, better? Not on. Hello? Hello? Is that better? Okay. Okay, let's see. Where was I? For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, this is a case regarding property located at 5560 West 29th Avenue, MS-12-01. It is a request for approval of a four lot consolidation plat on property zone C1. And the purpose of the request is to remove the internal property lines to accommodate building remodel and expansion. And I would point out that in this situation, which is a lot consolidation for lots, consolidation plats, five lots or less, Planning Commission is the sole authority on that. So you have the final authority for approval. This will not be forwarded to City Council. I'd like to enter into the record the subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting notification requirements have been met, therefore, Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. I hope that the Planning Commission is okay and entertains me talking a little bit about subdivision plats in general. We've got a couple new members, and I thought it always is a good refresher course for some of you old timers, too. Essentially, I came up with the definition from our article, excuse me, Article 4 of Chapter 26, which is the subdivision regulations in the zoning and development code. And so the definition I'm giving is the reconfiguration of a lot tract or parcel of land into two or more lots, plots, or other division of land for the purposes of sale or building development. We have many, many different kinds of plats that we recognize in the city of Wheat Ridge. Probably the most typical one that folks think of, it would be a final plat, and that's where you've got a big piece of property and developer comes in and tries, and subdivides it all up into single-family homes and extends a street into it. That's kind of the typical thing that people think of when they hear subdivision. We also have lot line adjustment plats, and that is a document that we use to adjust a common property line between two adjacent parcels. For example, if you had a fence that is over on your neighbor's side of the property line and you want it on your own property, you might come to the city and say, "Oh, I need this lot line adjustment so I can shift the lot line and get the fence on my own property since I built it." The one we're talking about tonight is a consolidation plat, and that is a document that combines two or more parcels into one parcel. As I mentioned before, Planning Commission is the sole authority on this case. It does not go on to City Council. And we'd have different approving authorities kind of based on what the application is. Sometimes it's an administrative review. Sometimes it goes to Planning Commission, who gives a recommendation to City Council, who's the final hearing. And this one, in this case, is just the Planning Commission. So what does a subdivision do? Well, essentially, it is a document that's prepared by a licensed professional surveyor to define existing property lines. Sometimes they create new lots. Sometimes they remove parcel lines. When someone comes in with a subdivision plat, it allows the city to evaluate some of the existing conditions, specifically the streets. Is there enough street width for what is being proposed? Do we need a new street to accommodate this new subdivision? It also allows the city to evaluate, especially, only in residential context, evaluate for parks and recreation purposes. Is this an area that we think we need a park? Should we have the developer pay fees and move and so on? And finally, it defines the required easements for development of a particular site. What doesn't a subdivision do? Well, it doesn't change the zoning on the property. If the property is zoned R1 and the developer comes in and subdivides, we can't mess with the zoning. That has to stay the same. It doesn't change the permitted land uses. Again, if someone were subdividing for an R1 subdivision, you couldn't approve it for duplex lots because it's not allowed by the zoning district. It doesn't address site development, such things as setbacks and building height and lot coverage. Those are covered under the zoning for the property. And then finally, a subdivision does not address impacts such as traffic, lighting, and noise. Again, we rely back on the development plan coming in and meeting all the standards that the city has, and then it can be approved. And if they don't comply with that, then there's code enforcement action typically. So hopefully, that's a quick and dirty, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory about what subdivision plats are really for. So this is the property in question. It is located at the southeast corner of 29th and DePew. You can see 29th Avenue up here at the top of the screen, and then DePew Street running down the western perimeter. The property is outlined in blue. It is Zone C1, which is a very general commercial category, and is about 13,000 square feet in size. These horizontal lines you see on the aerial photo, those designate the four little lots that make up this parcel, and it is the intent of this application to get rid of those interior lot lines. So currently on the property, there's two primary structures. There is what appears to be an old retail building that was built in the 1930s on the eastern portion, and then over on the western portion is a single-family residence. I looked at the property records today, and that house was built in 1920. And there's a couple other little accessory structures on the southern side of the lot. Let's see. The existing property access is really for the old house, and it is a curb cut on 29th Avenue, and it goes back to a detached garage. There's existing streetscape improvements, including detached walk and an amenity zone along 29th Avenue, and DePew Street is currently devoid of any curb and gutter. This little area in here is a parking pullout, I would suspect for those folks living in the single-family residence. Another thing to point out is over on the eastern side of the property, on the very east, adjacent to the old retail building, there is an alley that comes off 29th Avenue and continues down to, I want to say 28th, it might be 27th, not exactly sure. 28th, thank you. Let's see. The property is surrounded by a variety of zonings and land uses, both commercial and residential, to the east and west are properties zone C1. And that includes across DePew Street on the western side, the Wheat Ridge Poultry and Meat Market. Let's see. And to the north and south are properties zoned R1C and contain single-family residential homes. So the intent of this application, again, is to get rid of those interior lot lines. The property owner intends on demolishing the existing single-family residence on the western side and expanding the commercial structure for restaurant use, which is allowed in the C1 zoning. And because we don't allow construction over multiple lot lines, he has to go through this process so he has a developable lot. So, let's see. With that, let's take a look at some slides. This first slide is standing on 29th Avenue, looking at the old commercial building. You can see some of the streetscape improvements that were installed by the city, I want to say maybe eight years ago or so. Moving across 29th, here's that existing curb cut to the garage, which is related to the single-family residence, which is on the right-hand side of the image. And this is a better look at that little house. You can see, again, 29th Avenue here on the left-hand side, and then DePew Street over here on the west. This is a better view looking down 29th. Again, you can, you get a better view of how that existing structure comes out to the sidewalk, and then this, again, the streetscape improvements along the street. Close-up of the retail building. Close-up of the house. This picture is looking south on DePew, and you can see that there's no curb and gutter. A lot of the residential properties have sort of gravel shoulders that they use for parking. Over on the left-hand side where, or, excuse me, the right-hand side where you see kind of the two asphalt areas coming together, that's the parking lot for the poultry store. And finally, I am standing in the alley, looking north. So here, again, is the building which is intended to be reused, and 29th Avenue is up here. So this is actually the plat document we're talking about. It is one page. Planning Commission is pretty used to seeing these. There's a lot of boilerplate language that gets included on these, including legal descriptions and notes, and all kinds of signature blocks, so that if it gets approved, then we can take it and record it. So we're really looking at the drawing itself. Again, just to help orient, 29th Avenue is up at this location, and DePew Street is over on the west. Again, you can see those existing lot lines, which will be removed as part, as the intent of the subdivision approval. Again, it is properties made up of four, I believe they're 25 by 100-foot wide lots, which was originally platted in the 1890s, and so we have this situation all over the east side of Wheat Ridge as part of that original plating. At this point, we're not looking for any right-of-way, either on 29th Avenue or DePew Street. We think that there is adequate for, to meet the standards. I would note that the alley that I showed in the picture, located on the east, is currently not dedicated as right-of-way, and we are requiring that it be dedicated as an easement. And it does continue all the way down, and it looks like it has utilities, and also some garage access for some of those residential properties. There is an existing stormwater detention area that is shown. If you see the dotted line down here, that is to accommodate future storm drainage detention on the site. And staff would conclude that the proposed consolidation plat is compliant with Article 4 of Chapter 26, the subdivision regulations of the city of Wheat Ridge. We did refer this out to all the servicing agencies. Wheat Ridge Water Sanitation and Fire can all serve the property with upgrades. Wheat Ridge Economic Development has no concerns with this, neither does the Police Department. And finally, Public Works has reviewed and approved the plat. They are requiring the easement dedication for the alley on the east. They also have reviewed a drainage report, and the detention pond that's shown in the graphic does, would accommodate that drainage report. So staff is concluding that the subdivision meets the requirements of Article 4, which is the subdivision regulations in Chapter 26. All agencies can serve the property with improvements, and therefore, we are given a recommendation of approval with no conditions. That does conclude staff comments. I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Questions for staff? Commissioner Ohm?
I just have one. The drainage easement that's shown is kind of an odd shape. Is that, is that just kind of like, this is a proximate area that they could build in?
That they couldn't build in?
That they can. Is that really the intent of it, I guess?
Well, they did review a specific drainage report for the property and had to have several revisions to it. This is the one that was finally approved, and so by showing the easement on there, what could happen is if there were future owners who came in and they tried to do some sort of modification to the site, we would be able to look at this document and go, "Oh, no, no, you can't touch that. That has to accommodate drainage on the property."
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Duran, any questions? Okay. No.
If I remember correctly, there have been some drainage issues. It sticks in my mind about, oh, 26th and Chase, or 29th and Chase, in that area. Is this in that area affected with some drainage issues?
Yeah, it's a little bit further to the south, but yes, there is currently a CIP project being considered for, to try to remediate some of the drainage issues we've got in the area. It's a little bit further to the north, and it really has no impact on this.
Commissioner Weaver, any questions for staff? I just have one question.
Sure.
Actually, two, I'm sorry. Realizing that a subdivision plat typically deals with the lot width and lot frontage and lot size, et cetera, I'm just, one quick question, though, about use. Are residential structures allowed in C1 at all?
Yeah, the existing house in, on the property right now is currently non-conforming. We would not allow any new single-family homes to be built. It would have to be consistent with the zoning, which is a commercial zoning.
Could the, could the retail building expand with the residential structure still in place, or would that residential structure need to be torn down?
The tricky part on that is to accommodate the parking that might, is deemed to be required with the expansion of that retail building. It was very hard with the existing house, and that's why the decision was finally made that it be demoed, so there was adequate on-street parking. There wasn't a problem for the neighbors with that, folks filling out on 29th or DePew.
And then a final question. Based on your presentation, it sounds like no variances would be needed as a part of this plat to approve that. Is that, just to reiterate that?
That's correct. There's no variances part of the plat. As a matter of fact, it'd be interesting to let you know that commercial one properties, there's no lot width or lot size minimum, so no variances with that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you. At this time, then, we'll open up the hearing to the public, and staff will bring up a list of people who have signed up to speak. When I, yes. I'm sorry. Applicant is here and present. If you would come up, please state your name, address for the record, and any additional items or presentation you'd like to give for us.
Good evening. My name is Bud Starker. I live at 3019 Eaton Street, here in the city of Wheat Ridge. And I think staff has done a great job of outlining the consolidation plat. I don't really have anything more to, information to provide, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? No? No? None at this time? Thank you very much.
Pretty easy. Thank you very much.
When I do call your name, if you would like, please approach the microphone, state your name, your address for the record. If you do not wish to speak, and I do call your name, you can just say pass. But if you do want to say your favorable comments or unfavorable comments, we do need to hear that at the microphone, please. And after I read these, if there's anyone else in the audience who, for whatever reason, did not sign up, we'll be glad to make sure your comments are heard as well. When you up here, if you would address the commission for your comments, we'd appreciate that. First up, Linda Smith.
Hi, I'm Linda Smith. I live at 2844 DePew. And my concern is the traffic situation, which already exists, and that can be made worse by this property, since it will be a restaurant. And I guess one of the concerns is that, since it has access from 29 onto the property, as well as the alley, and I've heard that they are trying to have an exit from the property onto DePew. And right now, we have a big traffic problem because of the meat market, which has semi-trucks that visit it several times weekly, trash pickup every single day at there, and then during the hunting season, we have cars parking up and down that road with animals. We also have animals hanging, visible to everybody, that are, that blood is draining. And if that is, I don't know if that's another problem we need to address, where there needs to be a fence across there, where people cannot see these deer that are hanging to be drained. I mean, it's pretty gross, and, you know, if they, all they have to do is put a fence on DePew, but they haven't done that. So now we've got more traffic, plus this other traffic that exists. And if you need the traffic actually documented, I think that's something that we can get the residents, or we can get someone to do, because there's semi-trucks, you know, do come in there on a daily basis sometimes, and every other day. So that's, that's quite a big amount of traffic for just a small little street that's only one block.
Any questions or comments?
Looking at the picture, I just want to get an idea. The trucks are coming down to Pew, and then coming in the back of the shopette, and then coming through?
They're pulling into Pew on the west side of the street.
Yep.
Parking there, and then they back up toward that. Now, sometimes they come into the parking lot. There is an entryway into that area on 29th.
Yep.
Which would be great if they just used that, but they actually pull down on DePew and then back into it.
Okay, thank you.
And there are children that also walk, you know, that, this street from school all the time, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Okay. I guess my question is, I don't know if it's a variance issue, but does there have to be an exit on DePew if there are already two other entries and exits on that property, from the alley and from 29th? Is that something? I don't know. Are you the people that decide?
What we'll do is we'll compile the questions and then ask them to staff. Thank you, yes. Very good. Next, Janet Ryan.
My name is Janet Ryan, 2825 DePew Street. My concerns are very similar to Linda's, primarily the traffic impact on 29th, I'm sorry, the traffic impact on DePew. I'm also concerned about the future impact of potential liquor licenses. I know that's not something that you all will cover, but I just want to get that in the record, what that might do, and what kind of clientele that might attract, and how late in the evening that would mean that the traffic would impact the residents on DePew Street. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Dempsey Andrews?
My name is Dempsey Andrews. I live on 2836 Chase Street, and I would just like to speak on behalf of some of the neighbors in the area. We are very, very supportive of this consolidation and putting in the restaurant there. A lot of aspects about our neighborhood, we feel like it's two steps forward, one step back, and this restaurant could be a real game changer. I know that there are a lot of issues in southeast Wheat Ridge that the police department has to deal with. This would be a tremendous way to help us gentrify the area and just lift up a lot of aspects to the area. So in my, you know, brief survey of the neighbors around us, everyone is incredibly supportive of this. So I just wanted that to be put on the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Gillian Slaugh?
Hi.
Okay. Does all the names I have sign up? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against this application? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Sally Bangheart. I live at 2909 DePew Street. And I just want to say that I've talked to some of my neighbors, and we're in favor of the restaurant being located there as well. We agree with the gentleman that spoke before me, that it would really help uplift the neighborhood a little bit, and maybe make it more of a community, and so we're in favor of it also.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Mario Moranitz. I own the adjacent property south, so the house that is on the lot line to the south of the property. I would say that I fall somewhere in between, because I share your concerns about traffic on that, that specific corner where the meat market is, because it is congested there, and especially, like she said, during hunting season, the street gets extremely crowded with vehicles that are parked there for a long time. I support the idea of improving the neighborhood, because the structures that are there now definitely need some help. But I share concerns about liquor licenses and potential use in traffic in what is, right now, largely residential. So I think it could be gentrified, and it could be a positive, but, you know, I would sure welcome any comments by the developer in terms of clarifying it, so that we have a better idea of what the intended use is.
I have a question. I just have a quick question. On the plan, it talks about the stormwater retention, which would be to the front north of you.
Yeah, I didn't understand the response from staff regarding the nature of that, whether that was going to be a structure or a subterranean, or just area that needed to be left open.
Well, we looked at several different options, and Public Works reviewed a couple versions of the drainage report. I believe this one has underground detention structure, because they couldn't fit it all on the surface. So there will be drains that go into a vault below the parking lot that will...
So that would, that explains the object.
That's why it's, yes, exactly.
Okay. So presumably, that would be the parking lot over the vault, and the drains would go in?
Right. Parking lot in landscaping. I mean, obviously, there are standards for adjacent buffering and that kind of thing that might...
That's right. I was concerned.
Most of it's in the parking lot, but like I said, there might be some landscaping as well, so.
So I think I'd be more comfortable if I had a better idea of what the end product was and the use, you know, the intended use, at least for the first go-around, because obviously, the second, you know, if something happens in the future, we can't control that once the thing has changed.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else would like to speak? Just, we have a couple of follow-up questions, I think, for, for the city staff, and actually for the applicant as well. Maybe we could have the applicant come forward one more time, then? Additional questions for the applicant at all?
Did you just want, Mr. Starker, did you want to just go into any more detail, just to allie some concerns about the underground? Is it detention or retention?
Retention.
Retention, okay. So it's, obviously, you're still in the...
I would be happy to.
Detention.
I, I think, number one, I've got a very nice restaurant project, I think, developed, where the, with specific respect to the, the retention in the parking lot, it is a 16-car, probably a concrete parking lot. The two areas that you see will be concrete pavers, where the water will absorb into the ground and be piped into another, another holding, small holding basin. Okay, sure.
We're talking about, let's see.
Can you blow it out?
That's about as good as I can get.
Okay, you don't, you don't... Okay, you don't, you don't scale?
No.
Okay.
Not on PowerPoint.
So these areas right here and right here are concrete pavers in the parking, in the, where cars park, so water will absorb in that area there. I lost my, I lost my pointer. Well, I'm not a real PowerPoint person, but, that's okay. Anyway, water, you know, the, we've gone through, we've gone through a civil plan. There will be, will be an entrance on 29th, there's no, and an entrance on DePew Street here, and an entrance on 29th here. There's no entrance onto the property on the alley. We foresee, basically, the building that's there will remain there. The little house, we're going to deconstruct and try to reuse as much as we can. We're going to build a new restaurant kitchen or a dining room building that's about in this area. We're going to build a kitchen building back in this area. We foresee deliveries being made down the alley. There's a little walkway right here and deliveries into the back of the kitchen. Our trash will be picked up on-site via the, in the parking lot area. So that's how I see that. I mean, that's how that's going to happen. I mean, I would be happy to answer any more, any more questions.
Oh, that's good. I just wanted to understand the plan for the retention slash detention.
Yeah.
Thank you. Detention? D, D. Thank you.
Okay.
Any additional questions for the applicant? I do have a question. I realize this is outside the scope of the subdivision, but since you're here. Can you just briefly tell us kind of the type of restaurant you're proposing and the schedule ideally, and if you envision any alcohol being served there?
I've lived in this neighborhood for 35 years, since January of 1976. This building has been, it looks the same today as it did 35 years ago when I moved in. I always drove by and thought, what, I wonder what's in that building? It looks like a nice commercial building, but there's no life to it. I'm a building contractor by trade. As you know, I'm a division, I'm a District One counselor, so I, and I want to say how much I appreciate you all coming up, and I want to allay your concerns. I mean, it's a change in the neighborhood. I build restaurants. My, I wanted, I wanted a restaurant to go to, because I don't have a restaurant in my neighborhood. It's not a Sloan's, it's not a Providence. It's going to, the building that's there is going to be a bar building, so we'll be looking for a liquor license. I'm going to, I'm going to build a dining room building that's more of a traditional, you know, sit-down dining room, be a nice commercial kitchen. It's going to have an outdoor patio with a fountain on it in the front. It's going to have lots of landscaping, because I want it to be a Wheat Ridge restaurant. I want it to look like it's a, it's a European café in the country, is sort of the, that's my vision for the restaurant.
Appreciate that. Additional questions? Yes, sir.
I have one question, and I don't know who can answer, if it's going to be Meredith or Mr. Starker. For the, for that prop, that, you know, the boundary there where it says stormwater drainage on that southern end, I would assume there'd be some type of, you know, landscape buffer? So I'm looking at this thinking, like, is there going to be a landscape buffer over top of the drainage easement, and is that okay?
Generally, it is okay. What we, what we don't like on top of drainage easements is buildings, are buildings, and the requirement for parking lot buffering for adjacent residential is a six-foot-high, typically a six-foot-high fence, usually those are wooden, with some landscaping as well. So landscaping, okay. Parking lot, okay. Building, not okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, additional questions for staff?
I was just curious, over at Wheat Ridge poultry, you say you can see during hunting season, the deer hanging. What side, is it right on the parking lot side there, or?
Just behind the building, before the next house, the break house, there's a driveway that goes to the back of the building. You can see a big thing, like they're the metal racks, they're much where the hanging of the deer is from, the meat market hunting.
So as far as putting a fence, would it be easy over in there?
Sure.
Yeah, if you could kind of show us.
So here's, here's 29th, here's DePew, here's the parking lot. I think it's this alley, is that right? They back in, and obviously, the structure comes like this, and it's L-shaped, but this is right here. And I guess from a public health planning perspective, that raises a few eyebrows for me.
But if you come out there and you actually see carcasses stacked up, and they could, I think the most of them have two, two of the skull bones, and it's still, you know, been used like three quarters.
Okay.
Meredith?
Okay.
Meredith, I grew up on a farm, and I was around butchering, so I'm okay with that. But aren't there some rules regarding outdoor storage in commercial activity?
Well, I think...
And carcasses certainly are outdoor storage. I mean, that should be screened.
Something should happen. I'm, I guess, I'm curious, and probably will have to do some follow-up about what they're draining it into. Hopefully, it's not storm drain. That would be really bad. So hopefully, they've got that, you know, taken care of. I would think that as part of the health department, you know, yearly review, that would be something they would look at, so.
Just to clarify, and I agree that probably some follow-up is needed from the city staff, because it's on the other side of DePew, though, it would not be part of this case in consideration.
Correct.
I will tell you, though, that Steve's Meat, not that we're Arvada, but Steve's Meat Market in Old Town Arvada, same issue. However, it's surrounded by commercial. It's, it's Old Town Arvada, so it's surrounded everywhere by commercial. But they, they have outdoor storage of the carcasses and the bones and stuff, and they, I mean, it's just, it's what it is.
The other thing that you might want to consider is the, that building was probably built in the 1950s, and standards have certainly changed. If they were coming in now to us and said, oh, we want to do this, well, we would make sure that, you know, everything was copacetic. It all happened inside with the correct drains. So all I can, I guess, say is, probably this fall, we'll be making some trips by. I'll probably have a discussion with the building inspector and talk to him about that and see if there's anything we can help with.
Sure. Additional questions for staff? I do have a question, and this is just, again, for the nature of the audience. Has a site plan review or application been submitted yet for this site, for the restaurant expansion?
We have done some preliminary reviews, and, but they have, but Mr. Starker can't apply for a building permit until the consolidation occurs.
And then in terms of the process for a liquor license, if he did want to obtain liquor license, that would be, Wheat Ridge has a separate process for that.
Right, it's through the city clerk's office, and they, I know they survey the, survey the neighborhood and go to the liquor licensing authority, which is separate, a separate thing.
But there would be, that would be a public opportunity for the public to...
I believe so.
...talk about that particular issue. And then in terms of the site plan review or the building permit process, the exact access would be determined at that stage for the expansion and for the site redevelopment?
Yes, but I can tell you that, just be, you know, kind of the thing is, and it relates back to what I said about the property across the street, it doesn't meet any standard, because it was built back in the day. So we can't penalize Mr. Starker's development, because this is a bad situation over here. We will look, we look at the access, we make sure it's the safest traffic flow that works for the street. He's actually installing curb and gutter here to allow some additional pull-off parking and help define that, that access. So like I say, he has to follow the regulations, but we can't make demands on him based on, two rights don't make, or two wrongs don't make a right, I don't know. But we can't penalize him for what is going on over here.
Very good. Additional questions?
I just have one question. Sure, of course.
I just had a question more for the people that spoke. So I just want to understand that if the meat market issue wasn't there as far as the traffic, it sounds like generally, neighbors are in favor of what the petitioner's trying to do here. Am I understanding that correct? It's just that there is an existing problem, and you're concerned about it being exacerbated by this next thing?
I know it was a 300-seat tank, but...
Right.
Also, we would, so I guess the follow-up question, the community and the restaurant over the back of the lot, occupancy, they only got a 160-seat lot, apartment, so.
Sure.
Yes, the occupancy, it's...
Do we know that?
I'm not sure we've gotten down to brass tacks.
Right, that would be handled through the building permit process, right?
Again, we're really strained for the discussion, but I can tell you that Wheat Ridge typically, and this is kind of interesting, Wheat Ridge has the highest parking requirement for restaurants metro-wide, and we are finally, we want to make sure they've got enough, but not that, so that they're overparked. In this kind of context, with 29th, which is one of our collector's streets, we want to encourage pedestrian activity, bike riding. Mr. Starker will be required to put in a bike rack. So we're hoping, too, that everybody doesn't drive their car here, that there's opportunities for folks from the neighborhood to walk on over. So it'll be parked, believe me.
Thank you. So we do appreciate, we know that some of those questions were above and beyond, but we think that, considering the audience, that was useful information. So thank you for the applicant and the citizens for that. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll have discussion. We have additional questions? Okay. Oh, okay. Any discussion on the case first, before a motion's made? Okay, great. Then I'll entertain a motion. Tell yours, motion.
I move to approve case number MS-12-01, a request for approval of a four-lot consolidation plat on C-1 zone property located at 5560 West 29th Avenue for the following reasons. All requirements of Article 4 of the Zoning and Development Code have been met. All utility providers can serve the property.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, call for a vote? Very good. Your subdivision is approved. Thank you.
Did you second that?
And, oh, Scott did. You seconded it, right? Yeah.
You know what? You can call me tomorrow. I can't do that right now.
Okay. We may have additional items. Okay. That... Any additional items from staff?
No, only that we are recommending that the April 19th meeting be canceled.
Okay. Do we need to make a formal motion and vote on that?
I move to cancel the April 19th meeting.
There we go. Second. Let's vote on that, please. All right, seeing the other items, I will, someone make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Happy Easter, happy past. Happy Easter.
Thank you very much.